Good evening and welcome, everyone. I am calling the March 15th City Council Meeting to Order. Before we move on through tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge that we are in a remote meeting format. On March 6th, 2020, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, 2020, the Governor issued Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. The proclamation has been extended until termination of the state emergency or until repealed by the Governor or Legislature. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. A meeting link and call-in number were provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to attend the meeting this evening. And for those members of the public on the call, welcome. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Here.
Thank you. And Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Thanks. And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Great. We have all seven council members in attendance this evening. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I would ask all attending, if you could keep your microphone muted, but I do welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening will be audience comments. And for those of you who have submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. And for those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, you are able to raise your virtual hand. So if you are on the phone, please press *3. And if you have joined via computer or your smartphone, look for a Raise the Hand icon. This can vary by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and select your name and then choose Raise Hand. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to make a few additional comments before we go to our list. For all of those speaking this evening, please direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes, and please remute your microphone when you're done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if the connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and deceptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. And we thank you for taking your time this evening to address us. So City Clerk, would you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, the first person is Dani Franich. Dani, I'm going to make you a panelist now. You should shortly have an option to turn on your audio and video as well if you'd like.
So I'm Dani Franich. I'm the Associate Advancement Director at Village Theatre. Rob Hunt, who is our executive producer, and Jerry Dixon, who's our artistic director, are both in a board meeting this evening, so they asked me to come and represent Village Theatre. First, we wanted to thank the city of Issaquah for your support over the last year. We appreciate all that has been done for Village Theatre. We're so grateful to be part of this community for the last 42 years. So that's an incredible achievement in so many ways. Your support has enabled us to continue to keep a small staff going, hold virtual youth education classes and productions, and continue to support our new works over the last year of having our doors closed. You may have heard over this last week that we had a pretty incredible announcement. We are lucky and humbled to receive an anonymous $3 million gift. That gift has now been put into a reserve account to help us close the gap in our budget that we will undoubtedly have over the next few years as we work to bring our mainstage productions back and reopen our doors to the public again. As an organization with a $14 million annual budget, we know it's going to take us some time and support from our patrons and community to return, but this gift is really inspiring, and we hope that everybody else is inspired by it as well. So we look forward to continuing talking to everyone about our plans for the future, our exciting paths to reopening, and I appreciate the time given to me tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dani, and we look forward to your future reports. Congratulations on your donation. That's really great news. City Clerk, who is next on our list this evening?
Next on our list is Elizabeth Ma Penn. I don't see Elizabeth's number listed. Elizabeth, if you are calling in by phone, can you please raise your hand by pressing That's *3. You can also raise your virtual hand, which varies by device. Let's move on to our next... The next individual who signed up to speak is Brian Thompson. Also, don't see Brian on the call at the moment. Brian, if you're on the phone, could you please press *3 on your phone? Or if you're here by computer, you can raise your hand or send me a message. And while we're pausing for Elizabeth or Brian, if there's anyone else who's attending by phone or computer who'd like to make comments now, please press *3 on the phone or raise your virtual hand in the WebEx platform to let us know if you'd like to make Mayor, I'm just taking a minute to monitor this list here.
City Clerk, I think that's wonderful. I think what I will do is leave it open as we go to Council President Hunt, and we let her do email comments that she may want to summarize on any of tonight's agenda topics. And if you do see a raised hand, please let me know before I move on to the next item. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive several emails on different topics that we will be discussing this evening or that are on the consent agenda for this evening, and I have been summarizing these emails while we're doing virtual meetings. The first email we received expressed support for AB-8151, which is the expression of support for a state transportation revenue package. This community member also had expressed general support for AB-8150, which is the Transit Oriented Development MOU, memorandum of understanding, but also expressed several concerns, such as concerns about the parking ratios and a request that the city work with Raleigh Properties as an adjacent party that would be impacted by the project. Also, on the AB-8150, which is the MOU for the TOD, Transit Oriented Development, we received an email that expressed concern about any language that would imply that the MOU committed items... made any commitments on items and was also concerned about the public process around this and that there needed to be more community conversation on certain items in this. Then regarding the Mobility Master Plan, which is AB-8100, we received two emails that commented on this. One requested a change around wording on SR-900 to add language about barriers for this. And then also, we received another email from a community member expressing concerns, also suggesting changes to the Master Mobility Plan, including to address school siting and additional concerns. Then regarding AB-8146, which is the Title 18 Land Use Code, we received a couple of emails on this one as well. And one was expressing concern that there wasn't more process in that AB, and then one email expressing some comments on the actual scope of work for Title 18, because there was some information provided about Title 18 in that Agenda Bill. And lastly, we received a letter... or an email rather regarding AB-8142, which is the Economic Vitality Commission. And this was an introductory email for a candidate for the Economic Vitality Commission, introducing himself and thanking us for considering his appointment to that commission. And that, I believe, concludes the summary of emails that we received on topics we will be discussing this evening.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'm going to go back to the City Clerk. City Clerk, did you get any notification that somebody would like to speak this evening?
Yes, I do see one raised hand from call-in user with the first six digits, 206300. I'm going to unmute you now.
Hi, this is Steve Pereira. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I guess my concern is with the TOD project, and my concern specifically is with 163 proposed affordable housing units. What concerns me is that 50% of those are at the 80% or above AMI level, and I believe that those need to be regir towards a more equitable or lower distribution of the 40%, or 80% maximum level, not at the 80% or above 80% level for this deal to pan out or be a real equitable distribution of affordable housing. Thanks for the input. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. City Clerk, has anyone else raised their hand or shown an interest in speaking to council this evening?
Mayor Pauli, I don't see that anyone else has, and I would ask Steve if he would kindly lower his hand by pressing *3 on his phone.
Thank you. So I just want to remind everybody who's watching at home or here that the council receives their information in many ways, so you can always submit comments at any time to the email address citycouncil@issiquahwa.gov. And as Council President stated, during these remote meetings, we are summarizing those as well. So thank you to the folks that testified this evening about the Village Theatre, its gratitude for support during this year, and also their amazing $3 million anonymous donation, and also comments on making sure... comments and concerns about what type of affordable housing units and at what levels may be incorporated into the transit-oriented development project.
Mayor Pauli?
Yes.
I am so sorry for the interruption, but I do see one of the individuals who signed up to make comments tonight has joined us by phone.
Fabulous.
Okay, thank you so much. Elizabeth, I believe you've now joined us by phone, so I'm going to request that you unmute now.
How do I unmute?
We can hear you now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I tried to join by computer, but I wasn't able to get through. So what I wanted to say is that I really support the idea of having transit-oriented development and the Opportunity Center project. My concern is that we seem to have a lot of units at 80% AMI and above, and at 60% and above, but not very many that are at the 40% level, and none that are below that. We have a much greater need at those lower levels. We have a lot of nurses in our community, work in our community but can't live in our community. There are shop clerks who have to come tremendous distances. I couldn't survive here as a home care aide on just what I earn if I had to rent a place. I would like to see us find money from the taxes that we're going to be getting through that 1% increase and just expand the number of units that will really be affordable for the people who most need to be near transit. People who earn 80% of AMI and above can afford cars. And I think the idea of the bottom floor being owned by the city and rented out is great. I've found that with the affordable housing that we currently have that is not owned by the city, the city invests in it, but we don't really have a lot of control over how it's maintained. And I think when the city has some ownership of the property, the incentive for us to maintain that property and keep it viable and usable for people who need it is much greater. So those are my comments. I'm a citizen who's been here for a long time, since 1982 pretty much, and I really care about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. City Clerk, is there anyone else this evening that signed up or indicated?
No.
Okay, great. I think we captured it all. We will move to the next item on our agenda, which is committee and regional reports, and we will be starting with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Hall. Just a couple of quick reports. A reminder that the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors, our next meeting is next Wednesday, Wednesday, the 24th, at 3:30 p.m. An agenda hasn't been posted for that yet. And then the next meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council is also that Wednesday, March 24th, and that's at 1 p.m. And some of the things that we will be discussing are... We'll be providing some input on the Health Through Housing Implementation Plan, which is King County's plan for implementing their Health Through Housing proposal, which was the 0.1% sales tax increase for affordable housing needs. So that'll be really interesting, and I'll bring those details back to the council. We will be discussing the status of the Growth Management Planning Council's consideration of our countywide planning policies Housing Chapter amendments, which we all learned a lot about last week, making some new member appointments, getting an update on what we're calling the Affordable Housing Dashboard, which will be a website that you can go to to see affordable housing metrics across the region, which will help policymakers in developing affordable housing policy. So I'll be sure to share that link as soon as that's finally put together. That'll be really interesting for us policymakers. And then we'll get a quick update on the legislative session in Olympia with regard to affordable housing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Next up is Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember De Michelle. I attended the Healthier Here Governing Board on March 4th. We continued our discussion of equity in health care with a pledge that each of us will develop an equity goal for the coming year and hold each other accountable for that goal. Of general interest was a report on a new behavioral health apprenticeship program developing through a partnership between the SEIU, which is the Service Employees International Union, the University of Washington, Eastern Washington University, and several community colleges. The program will offer associate degrees and apprenticeship opportunities for three entry-level careers, including behavioral health technician, peer counselor, and substance use disorder professional. The program is designed to give people a low-cost way to get into the field and sets them up for an eventual degree program. For 20 openings in the initial program, over 200 people applied, nearly all of them people of color. The program is being put in place as a way to begin to address the need for many more mental health and substance abuse disorders practitioners, and I'm really excited about this because it begins to address a huge gap that we have between the need for counselors and social workers and the capacity to provide those people for places where they're needed. I also attended the Connect to Community Advisory Group on Wednesday, March 10th. We approved the group's charter and began a discussion of the virtual community information exchange platform design. I am hoping that Councilmember Ray will give me some pro bono consultation on this and as we move forward with this project, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Next up is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Very, very short report, just saying that I will be attending on Friday the Isqwa Chamber of Commerce's board meeting, and I will... We have no agenda yet, so I will report back after we have the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on March 11th. There's not a lot to report out. It was the board's first meeting of the entity as a nonprofit, so that was exciting. That was, in effect, starting on March 1st. We were briefed on the agency's regional recruitment efforts that are aimed at increasing diversity in hiring. Six agencies are part of that hiring consortium, which has a website at wa-fire-careers.org for people who are interested. There is a single test for applicants regardless of how many fire agencies the applicant is interested in when they apply, which cuts testing time enormously. Applicants also... Sorry. The group who was working on the regional recruitment efforts also has cut testing fees by half, would like to provide hardship waivers for fees, and also hopes to cut fees to zero one of these days. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mertz. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, March 4th. There were extensive conversations about regional housing strategy, but no actions were contemplated or taken. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, March 10th. There were two workshops that were held. The first was on King County countywide planning policies, where I conveyed what I had heard two days prior from this council. And there was also a workshop on best starts for kids levy, the proposed upcoming levy, and there was much feedback and discussion of the package. And it is... It would be, as currently configured or as configured when we saw it, would have been about... Or it would be about twice the size of the five-year package that preceded it. The previous package was $400 million over five years. This would be $800 million over five years. So that feedback, I believe, was conveyed to the county executive. We'll see where that whole conversation goes. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Next up is Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. The King County Growth Management Planning Council, not to be confused with the Growth Management Policy Board, will be meeting on March 31st at 4 o'clock in a virtual format. The purpose of the meeting will be to direct the release of the public review draft of the countywide planning policies, and it will also include draft growth targets. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. I have an upcoming meeting to announce. On March 18th, the WIRA-8 Salmon Recovery Council will be meeting. WIRA-8 is the technical acronym for our watershed. And on the agenda, we have the King County Clean Water Healthy Habitat Initiative, as well as the WIRA-8 Diversity Equity and Inclusion Strategic Plan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. We are going to move on to the mayor's report. I have a few items for tonight. The first is that there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NI, and this item is expected to last 30 minutes with no action being anticipated in open session. I'd now like to make a proclamation for National Safe Place Week, and one of our speakers that was coming this evening was going to also address this proclamation and what it means, and we weren't able to have him tonight. So here we go. Whereas Safe Place is a program that quickly connects runaway and homeless youth ages 12 to 17 to services, either by reuniting them with their family or providing them with emergency shelter. Whereas more than 379,000 youth have been helped at a Safe Place location or receive counseling as a result of the Safe Place information received at school. And whereas, since the program inception in 1983, more than 15 million youth have been educated throughout the National Safe Place Network outreach efforts, familiarizing them with the Safe Place sign and providing them with the information about how to seek help in order to stay safe. And whereas, the Friends of Youth and Youth Care have run in partnerships since 2012 to provide Safe Place services for youth in crisis across King County. And whereas, increased awareness will encourage more communities to establish Safe Place locations where youth can readily access the help they need, please join me in the observance of National Safe Place Week, March 21st through 27th, 2021, in the city of Issaquah. During Women's History Month in March, we also join organizations throughout the country to celebrate March 19th, as women in public office say. Women play a critical role in the vitality and diversity of our communities and are essential to ensuring Issaquah is well represented. While the 20th century was a pivotal time of growth for women entering politics, women still remain underrepresented in male-dominated fields. That's why providing opportunities to support women in public office is imperative. Recognizing women in public office also brings awareness to the fundamental necessity of their work and will hopefully inspire other young people to serve their communities. I am proud to hold the title of Issaquah's third female mayor and serve alongside four fantastic female city council members. Thank you all for your service. I'm also going to give an update on the Issaquah Community Vaccine Partnership. The partnership met earlier today for our weekly coordination meeting. Our focus remains that when COVID-19 vaccines are more readily available, we will be ready. The partnership's drive-up mass vaccination site is now ready for Operation in Issaquah, and we shared the details of this site with King County leaders planning for future distribution locations. According to Public Health, Seattle and King County, there is still a scarcity of the COVID-19 vaccine right now, with only one dose of the vaccine currently available for every eight eligible people. The agency is first focused on managing distribution as equitably, efficiently, and quickly as possible. Meanwhile, supporting our most vulnerable residents remains a top priority. Issaquah is partnering with Eastside Fire and Rescue to offer limited mobile COVID-19 vaccination clinics to eligible residents who are not physically able to travel outside of their home. Appointments are dependent on available vaccine supply. If you are eligible for this mobile clinic or you need special assistance, please call us at 425-837-3300. We are here to help. And finally, I'd like to play a video of our mass vaccination site at Lake Spanish State Park for our council and for the viewing audience. And it is supposed to have music and not be choppy, but what can you do in this digital world? We get what we get. been set up at the state park. Now we just need vaccine. So I have been notified by the clerk that Brian from Friends of Youth is here, and so I think I would like to give him an opportunity to say a few words since he just missed my proclamation and just missed public comments. So Brian, if you'd like to provide us some comments tonight, we would really appreciate it. So Brian, if you'd like to provide us some comments tonight, we would really appreciate it.
And Brian, this is Tisha. I've just moved you up as a panelist, so you should have an option to unmute and address us?
I think I'm unmuted. Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. Go ahead, Brian. Welcome.
I see all the nods, so that must mean yes. Yeah, I just want to say thank you guys very much for recognizing National Safe Place and Issaquah. It's a super awesome program. I'm not saying that just because I'm paid to say that. I really believe it's really cool. Just having 24 access for youth to call, young people, adults, case managers, police, law enforcement, like CPS, it's just such a cool program to come out there and recognizing it as National Safe Place Week is just a really cool thing. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And thank you for coming to speak to us tonight, Brian.
Yes. Sorry I was a little late. My wife got stuck at the bus stop, so I had to change my priority there for a second, because I'm sure you all can understand.
It sounds like you had it in the right place. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
For sure. Thank you all.
I am going to move to the next item on the agenda this evening, which is informational updates. And we have ID 0854, Community Courts, and the council did hear a brief update on this item at the February 23rd Council Study Session, and has requested some additional information about the program. So I'd like to invite Judge Stewart and Court Administrator Kristy Shorn to make a presentation, and there will be no action required. This is for information only. Come on up.
What do you need for Kristy? Kristy, are you going to join us?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I think most of you know me. If you don't, my name is Scott Stewart, and I have the honor of serving as the Issaquah Municipal Court Judge. I want to introduce Kristy Shorn. I know you've all met Kristy, but I take every advantage I can to introduce her. We stole Kristy from Rent a couple of years ago, and it was a coup, especially with the pandemic. We had no idea the pandemic was coming, but at the point we stole Kristy, we were aware she was smart. We did not fully realize that she literally is the Washington State guru on everything having to do with computers, virtual court documents. And as we've developed in this virtual world, we've become the go-to court. It's kind of humorous. We kick back and we're watching some of the larger courts get awards from the Supreme Court about some of the work they're doing, and they literally are copying things that we've been doing since May, and they just started doing them. And that's because of Kristy. We're on top of things. Way ahead. Our court's handling full calendars, where other courts are about one-third, and we all that all to Kristy, and you guys should know that. We did a good job hiring her. Today, I'm here for the purpose of presenting on a municipal court's goal of implementing a community court calendar. Community court's kind of a misnomer. It's not a new court. Our court operates on a month-long calendar basis. We have the first week of the month, we have infractions, arraignments, pre-trials. Second week of the month, we have pre-trials, pre-trials, reviews. Third week of the month, jury trials, pre-trials, jury trials. Each month is relatively the same as far as the calendars that we go through. And what we would be doing is adding a community court calendar to that particular calendar setting. It would just be a different calendar within the confines of what we do now. Same prosecutors, same defense attorneys, just a different specific calendar. For those, I guess you're all aware of it, but for those of you that aren't, District Municipal Court obviously handles infractions. We handle all of the infractions that are filed in the city of Issaquah. In addition, both the basic infractions, law enforcement officers come out, lights go on behind you, the police officer pulls you over, but also the full enforcement over in front of the school. But the vast majority of the work that we do, at least on a workload daily basis, are criminal cases. We handle approximately, over the last three years, an average of 400 criminal cases, 1,400 criminal cases, excuse me, a year. So there's a total of 1,400 criminal cases filed into our court. And those cases are all misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. Gross misdemeanors are the most serious. They carry up to 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine. Misdemeanors are the less serious. They carry up to 90 days in jail and a $1,000 fine. And of course, within misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors, there are more or less serious crimes depending upon how the community views them. For most people that practice in our courts, and as a general rule, I think from the community in general, the most serious crimes that we deal with at our level are driving under the influence and assault, primarily assault, domestic violence, and other domestic violence charges. And those cases are more serious for obvious reasons. A DWI is just one step away from being a vehicular homicide or a vehicular assault. And an assault in the fourth degree, domestic violence, is just one step away from being an assault III, assault II, or assault I, or even a homicide. So those cases are the crimes that we, a lot of the emphasis, a lot of the court time goes into managing those particular cases, but they're only a small percentage. Well, depends on your definition of small, but of the 1,400 criminal cases that we've averaged over the last three years, it's been a pretty consistent number of just under 300 that are either DUIs or domestic violence assault, domestic violence malicious mischief, and regular assault-type cases. The traditional model that you see in a courtroom, and I know that at least, I don't know how many lawyers you have on your council. I know that Councilmember Goodman's a lawyer, but the traditional model that we have in a courtroom on criminal cases is adversarial, just like every other courtroom. The prosecutor, the defense attorney, they come in, and they're fighting for opposite goals. The prosecutor wants a conviction. They want accountability. They want punishment. The defense attorney is looking for an acquittal, and hopefully their client not being held responsible. Sentencing, most cases get the sentencing. The way the process goes is every case starts with an arraignment. There's a number of pre-trials, motions, state readiness calendar, and a very small number of cases get to jury trial. We actually are back, we did one set of jury trials in October during the pandemic. Spikes hit. We're back to trying jury trials again next month, or in April, with some very specific social distancing, but very few cases get there. I think both Ms. Shorn and I would agree. It's probably likely none will go, although we need to open up the opportunity for it, simply because we're getting so backed up with jury trials because of the pandemic. But most cases go through that process. The vast majority result in some type of a disposition. And there's lots of dispositions that happen in a district municipal court setting. The way a disposition typically works is, let's say the defendant is charged with possession of drug paraphernalia or criminal trespass in the second degree. Both of those are simple misdemeanor crimes. Both of those carry up to 90 days in jail and a $1,000 fine. Both of those crimes make up a significant number of the crimes that we see in the Issaquah Municipal Court. I think that's true of most courts throughout the state. A lot of our time is devoted to people that are charged with domestic, excuse me, possession of drug paraphernalia and/or criminal trespass, and these are the same people that are charged all the time. There are regular faces that we see at the district municipal court level, and we see them all the time, same people, because it's a cycle. It's revolving door cycle that we're seeing the same people. If person number one comes in front of me for sentencing on a possession of drug paraphernalia charge, what I'm typically going to do is I'm going to sentence him to 90 days in jail. I'm going to suspend some portion of the jail time. Remember, jail is a limited resource. We can only put so many people in jail. That's become very obvious during COVID, because the jail is having to do social distance, so we're heavily using the jail for the folks that really scare us. So 90 days in jail, maybe suspend all the jail, maybe suspend all but two days. So we sentence them to 90 days, suspend all but two days. They're going to do two days in jail, and we have 88 days in jail that we can hang over their head for two months to try to correct their behavior. And it's hung over their head on the condition of suspending the sentence. The individual might get an order that they have no criminal law violations, that they show up at court dates, that they not consume any alcohol and non-prescribed drugs. And typically, we're going to order them to get an alcohol-drug evaluation and follow-up, with the expectation that we'll set a review hearing about 30 days out, and that they'll return to that review hearing, and they'll obtain this alcohol-drug evaluation. And there are any number of private agencies in the state that will do alcohol-drug evaluations. Friends of Youth, you just had those alcohol-drug evaluations, although they're limited to youth, and so a lot of our clients don't fit into that category. The city works with THS through Human Services. They do alcohol-drug evaluations. ICRON does alcohol-drug evaluations. One of the major agencies that we deal with in our area is Raging River, which is over in Snoqualmie. They take Apple Healthcare, so a lot of our more marginalized communities is able to get their alcohol-drug evaluations through them. We ordered them to get this alcohol-drug evaluation. We set a review hearing out about 30 days. We wait for them to come back. They come back for the review hearing. At that review hearing, we check and see if they have any new criminal law violations, and we ask about the alcohol-drug evaluation. And inevitably, they haven't done it. And the reason they haven't done it is for the first time we find out, they don't have a way to get to the alcohol-drug evaluation. They've never signed. We all know that Apple Healthcare is out there and available. They've never signed up for Apple Healthcare, so they can't get anyone to accept them for the alcohol-drug evaluation. We set it over again, say about 30 days. We tell their attorney they need to come back with the alcohol-drug evaluation. We need to find a way to get to this evaluation. They come back in the 30 days, and they've just signed up for the Apple Healthcare. The Apple Healthcare should be in place in a couple of weeks, so we end up sending it over for another 30 days. And keep in mind, throughout this entire process, each of these folks, what the system recognizes is that the quicker we can get someone that's got an alcohol or drug problem into treatment, the more likely they are not to reoffend, more likely they are not to use. We put people in inpatient treatment all the time. When they get out of inpatient, we need to put them in aftercare, because they're less likely to reoffend. Sometimes it takes 90, 120, 150, even 180 days before we can get somebody from a sentencing to the point where they're actually in treatment. And during that time, the vast majority of them reoffend at that review hearing. What happens when someone reoffends is there's a revocation hearing. At the revocation hearing, there's a sanction. The court has sentenced them to 90 days. They've suspended 88. They haven't done what they're supposed to do. We have to find a sanction. Sometimes that sanction involves jail time, which again uses part of that commodity. Jail time also has collateral consequences of people that are working. And it's not a heavy percentage of these folks that are working end up losing their job. And so we've become very, very much aware of that. And I just realized I'm supposed to be sharing my screen, and I'm not doing it, because... So we're going to flip ahead real quick here and see if I'm smart enough for doing this.
It seems, Judge, like you were doing a pretty clear presentation without it, but I'm sure it's going to help a few people if you also see the presentation.
That's going to make sure I'm on the right. I've only two slides in, so we're okay now. So the community court concept is based upon a collaborative system, a collaborative model. And we aren't going to be the first court to do it. I will tell you, folks, when Lynn Campbell was my court administrator a number of years ago, before she passed away, her and I were talking about a community court. Two courts in the state had started at that point in time, Spokane and Olympia. Olympia's actually become one of the national leaders on it. And Ms. Campbell and I were talking about it. We put together some of the major ideas about how it might work in the city of Issaquah. And then unfortunately, Ms. Campbell passed away. When Kristy Shorn came on, we talked about it, and then bam, we got hit with the pandemic. And just the ability to provide court became the primary responsibility of the court. Now we're looking at some of the other things the court can do to serve the community and hopefully address some of the problems that we deal with in a better fashion than we are, at least for some of the folks that appear in our court. So rather than being adversarial, prosecutor versus the defense attorney with the judge judging, community court calendars allow a collaborative model. And what that means is the prosecutor, the defense attorney, the court probation, we're working towards a common goal. And the common goal is to address the circumstances that resulted in the criminal behavior. These circumstances can be simple. Getting identification. If you've ever talked to somebody that's on the street, or somebody that's in a marginalized community and is not working, oftentimes we'll hear that they tried to get the job at Wendy's, but they just flat out didn't have an ID, and therefore they couldn't get it, or a social security guard. Signing up for that healthcare, getting them in touch with Apple Healthcare, or whatever healthcare might be available, and getting them signed up, as well as more complex issues like addressing drug addiction. Just about every person we're going to see in community courts is going to be involved in some type of an alcohol or drug treatment program. Mental health issues, oftentimes they go with drug addiction. Completing high school diplomas or getting a GED, those are huge. I mean, getting a GED, or some of the folks are so close to completing a high school diploma, but have given up. It just doesn't make sense. And if we can encourage them to this program to get that high school diploma, we all recognize increases their likelihood for employment. And other issues with regard to lack of employment, homelessness. Once the participants are identified, court prosecutor, the defense, we support and encourage them in trying to move forward with what is they need to restore or address their needs. The goal here is restoring them, being a protective member of community and no longer committing crimes, rather than a punitive goal, which is what you find in the traditional setting. The way the process works is simple. The case is filed. The prosecutor is the one that filed the case. We get the case from the prosecutor. The prosecutor, after he files the case, identifies those cases which they think are appropriately for the community court calendar and refer them to the community court calendar. Prosecutor works directly for the executive. That gives the executive branch the ability to control the types of cases. So if they have concern about certain cases not being sent into community court, that could come from the prosecutor. Once a case has been identified for community court, a person shows up at that first court date, called an arraignment, and they're offered an opportunity to go into community court. If they opt into community court, it's set over to a community court calendar. They meet with a case manager. The case manager finds out what their needs are. They present those needs to the prosecutor, the defense attorney, and the prosecutor and defense attorney develop a plea disposition to address the needs of the particular person. So that person may need an ID. They may need some job training. They may need an alcohol-drug evaluation. They don't have insurance. They may need insurance. That person is then offered one of two things. They're either offered a deferred sentence, or they're offered a stipulated order of continuance. Went back and watched the video from the last one, and Councilmember Goodman talked about the deferred sentence, and that's one of the main tools that they use. Both of those tools, the deferred sentence and the stipulated order of continuance, are tools we have in the present system. They're just used in a different manner. Deferred sentences, I anticipate, is going to be more often used in situations where the person has some type of a criminal history, but they want to give them some encouragement for addressing their needs. And so the deferred sentence requires the person to plead guilty. They plead guilty. They come in front of the court, and they're presented with a plan. The stipulated order of continuance is not a guilty plea, but an agreed continuance prior to pleading guilty, where the defendant's required to stipulate to the facts in the police report. That case is then continued, and the defendant's given similar conditions, a similar plan that they have to meet in order to accomplish the goal. In both cases, the court takes the full jurisdiction of the case, 24 months. That means that we could have up to 24 months to get the time or consideration hanging over the particular defendant's head. But we also create graduation rates based upon the decision of the prosecutor and the defense as to how long it should take this person to complete what the goals are. And if they complete it within those goals, be they six months, nine months, the case is dismissed, and we actually have a little bit of a celebration. There's certificates that are provided. We have done certificates. We don't have a full community court, but we've had a couple of defendants in our court that have excelled with regards to addressing heroin, who have addressed heroin, gone to college, or no longer actively using heroin. I'm not willing, I guess, to say I have kicked heroin, because I mean, any addiction is a lifelong battle. But we're able, we celebrate that. People stand up and cheer, and it's a big moment in that person's life, and we hope to have a lot of those moments as part of our community court. Community court calendars will generally occur weekly rather than monthly. They would be smaller calendars. We don't anticipate more than 75 people being in our community court, at least in the first year. This allows for the court to have a closer monitoring of the defendants, a quick response where they fall out of compliance, but also recognition for the folks that are doing well. Calendars will place special emphasis on treating parties with dignity and respect, and a primary goal is to reduce the barriers faced by these folks in obtaining services. Remember, one, if you go back to my possession of drug paraphernalia person earlier on, that person, the court essentially gives responsibilities and sends them out to the community to find them. And we don't have the ability to give every one of the defendants appearing in our court somebody to hold their hand while they go out in the community, but the folks that we identify that really need the special treatment, the community court brings those resources to them. Way it works in Olympia, for instance, is these people all sign into a Zoom meeting. The judge is even on the bench at first, and inside that Zoom meeting, they create breakout rooms, breakout room with DSHS, a breakout room with an alcohol-drug treatment, and breakout room with somebody that can provide them with how to sign up for healthcare, a breakout room with somebody that can help them get a driver's license or other ID. The case manager has identified their needs, and they just send these people into the breakout rooms. When they've gotten to the breakout rooms, they come in front of the judge. The judge sees how they're doing, and they move on to the next court, to the next court date, which will be typically one week off. One of the rewards that they get is when they're doing well, it becomes two weeks off, and when they're doing even better, it becomes a month off. Eventually, they graduate, and there's a celebration. The great thing is the research has shown, this is the great thing. The reality is research has shown that some of these lesser crimes, crimes like malicious mischief, crimes like criminal trespass, crimes like pedestrian drug paraphernalia, can result in more serious crimes. They can be crimes that start off on more dangerous behavior. I will tell you that we asked the prosecutor and the defense attorney to come up with the names of folks, and until I started doing, being involved in criminal law, I did not realize the percentage of our population. One of the things they teach us in judge school, we have to go to judge school, is if you gather a room of about 100 people together, of those 100 people, 98 of the 100 have never been involved in the criminal justice system, which means it's a general rule when dealing with two of those people. You gather a room of just those two people together, 98 of them have had one thing, like that one DUI, and then that's been their one thing. At least there's one person, you put a hundred of those people together and those folks are with you deal with on a regular basis. Uh, prosecutors point out that, um, we have folks in our jail, um, who've served five or six hundred days um, in jail on ten or more convictions, um, all for nine violent offenses. So these are people that are taking up jail space for nonviolent criminal trespass, possession of drug paraphernalia type offenses, just because they continue to not comply with conditions when we send them out in the world and ask them to take care of them on their own. Goal is that if we grab them early, um, and we get them into our community court, we put them in front of these providers, we build up a plan that gets them from identification, health insurance to alcohol drug treatment, that they no longer become part of the criminal system. Uh, so not being part of the criminal system, they're not able to commit more violations. Uh, we've changed a person's life, achieved public trust in, in the justice system and ultimately create a safer community. Um, this slide, um, is according to the findings of this Olympia municipal court. This program's been in existence for five years. It's one of the early, earlier systems, uh, that is going here in the state of Washington. Olympia has determined that eighty-six percent of their graduates at the community court have not convicted, have been convicted of a new crime. Sixty-four percent experiencing homelessness are connected to homeless related services. Forty-four percent of participants are connected to employment. Seventy-nine percent mental health services, forty-nine percent substance abuse services, fifteen percent decrease in their jail population, and a twenty-three percent reduction in criminal filings. Um, we do want to be aware that the folks that will be involved in community court, um, are nonviolent offenders. Um, when you add all the violent offenders together, you have fourteen and forty-one average cases. About four hundred, a, a third of those criminal offenses filed are nonviolent criminal offenses, four hundred and eighty. We anticipate seventy-five participants annually enrolling in the community court program. Again, it will be heavily controlled by the prosecutor. The prosecutor is going to have to make the referral. We've listed a number of the cases here that are potential, uh, nonviolent offenses. I think the two main ones we're going to see, possession of drug paraphernalia, uh, um, criminal trespass, um, disorderly conduct. Um, those cases, the prosecutor is going to be able to look at and they're going to be able to say, is this a case that we can refer to community court? Um, and then if the person accepts it, we figure we'll get about seventy-five participants a year. So far, what we've done, we've identified a core team, a person's working on the project. Our prosecutor Lynn Moberde and, um, her assistant Alexa McBarren, um, our defense attorney, Whitney Gardner, um, and her team, probation officer Melanie Vannick, um, Monica Negrilla from the human service department. We've all been working on this, looking into the possibilities. We'd identified some of the needed services that will be provided at court calendars. I do want to emphasize that, um, this is something that I think only works, um, if, if all branches of the government is interested in it and is. And, and I point that out because one of the things you want to do is you want everybody to say, this is what we think some of the issues are that need to be addressed for this portion of the community and we can add those services, um, into the program. Right now, the city already funds ICRON and THS. Now obviously we have this quad food and clothing bank and they've all indicated a willingness to work with us. Our probation officer Melanie Vannick, much to our luck, has already completed the necessary training through Department of Social Health Services that will allow her to assist participants in applying for services as a community connection partner. Uh, Christie, myself, or Ms. Shorn, myself, Ms. Negrilla, we visited the Charlotte Municipal Court. We visited the, uh, Olympia municipal court. They're all very willing to work with us. Uh, you should know that there are community courts operating in Redmond. Kirkland, uh, community court opened this month. Um, Renton's in the process of opening the community court. Um, those are obviously bigger jurisdictions, um, but we meet, we, with, with regard to Kirkland, we've already worked with them in developing some of the forms. They needed to develop forms. We want forms. Let's save money and work together. We're working with Renton Municipal Court. Uh, Christie's got connections there, but on top of that, they're in the staging process. And so we're working at the possibility of sharing resources. Um, we've identified a number of eligible offenses, had phone meetings with a number of the courts and we're in discussions with a consultant to aid in setting up the process. That means I'm open for questions. I, I talk real fast. It's high school debate. I never got over it. I apologize.
Judge Stewart, that was a fantastic presentation and, um, just a special little quick shout out to you and Christie for all you've done through COVID that we were able to operate as we have, which has been amazing. We have several questions in the chat, so we will start with Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. Hi Judge Stewart, um, always great to hear from you. Uh, can you go to slide thirteen? I have a question about criminal filings and eligible nonviolent offenses.
I figured I had to go back here and I can do it. This one here?
Yeah. So could you explain, there's three of these that I'm, I don't, I don't understand. Malicious mischief, criminal trespass and theft third degree. Can you explain those three crimes and why they would be part of this program?
Well, they're not considered violent offenses and I, I honestly, Karen can see a weapons on there as well. And every, whenever I see the word weapon, it makes me a little bit nervous. And the answer to that is they would be on the program, but they would be controlled again by the prosecutor. So I think that, uh, for instance, malicious mischief fits into a number of cat- categories. I walk a real fine line when I talk about specific cases, but I can think of cases, uh, um, malicious mischief cases where it might be appropriate for community court and malicious basis where it might not be appropriate for community court. That being said, the prosecutor who again, um, works for the executive branch and controls what comes in here could decide, I'm not going to do any um, malicious mischief cases. Um, she has the ability to, to keep those off. Uh, the ones that we've said as a court, uh, aren't going to come on are DUI. I, I, I don't think it's ever appropriate, um, to, to, especially with the concerns about domestic violence, to allow any domestic violence case into community court. Even if the prosecutor wants to, we're not going to be willing to do it. I don't think it's ever appropriate to allow any DWI into community court, even if the prosecutor wanted to, we're not going to be willing to do it. There may be theft charges and there may be malicious mischief charges that were appropriate on the specific facts of the case. Um, I, I can tell you, and I, I can't talk about specific cases. I can tell you, I had one case of malicious mischief in my court that had to do with salmon days. It was one of the more egregious cases that I, I'd ever seen and, and there's no way that case is making it into community court, but the prosecutor wouldn't refer it anyway. Uh, the way cases come into the court, um, we're not a direct file court, so the police office department files with the prosecutor. The prosecutor reviews it. She would then make a referral to community court, which is much the way most of these courts work. Veterans court, the prosecutor makes a referral, uh, um, militia, uh, um, mental health court, the prosecutor makes a referral. Um, so these are just cases that aren't traditional in there. I'm not sure I'm real comfortable with anything that involves a weapon. Um, but these are cases that are potential community court cases. No, no final decision's been made. I think you will see malicious mischief and disorderly conduct, which are, are pretty common cases, uh, put into community court. I don't think malicious mischief, domestic violence would ever make it to community court. But does that answer your question?
Yeah, Councilmember Mart, do you have additional information?
Uh, I don't think it does answer my question. I'm trying to understand. Um, you know, most of these, I can see an argument that says that they're, and forgive me if this is a, a imprecise term, but victimless crimes, um, but, but malicious, uh, malicious mischief, criminal trespass, theft third degree. These all seem like a different category because it seems like there's probably a clear victim in these three cases, in these.
Sure. I will tell you that one of the, the RCW ten point two oh, uh, on, on either malicious mischief or a theft in the third degree, authorizes the case to be resolved by way of what's called a compromise of misdemeanor. Um, a compromise of misdemeanor means that they pay for the damage and the case gets dismissed. Uh, um, any community court program, look, any, there's no treatment, there's no nothing, the case gets dismissed. Any community court process, um, would involve restitution. Whenever you've got theft and whenever you've got malicious mischief, it's going to involve restitution. Any, every community court uh, charge is going to rev- involve, uh, um, community service. And community service is going to be determined based upon the significance of the crime. So to the extent, and, and I, I don't want to mislead you, not all malicious mischiefs and not all theft charges are resolved by way of, um, um, compromise of misdemeanor, but that's an option that's available. Um, not all malicious mischief and not all theft charges, if any, are going to be resolved by way of community court. But to the extent the prosecutor makes the determination upfront that the society has benefited, this is a person that's theft arises out of a heavy drug problem, we have not been able to satisfy, uh, or we've not been able to, he's a regular in our court. Um, every time we let him out of jail, he goes back and does the same thing. We have not been able to motivate him to get into treatment. He needs the drug treatment in order to avoid the criminal behavior so he can get a job. It's just another tool that we would have, uh, that might be available to him. It would always involve restitution and it was always involve, um, community service as a sanction.
Councilmember Mart?
It would have to motivate them by the prosecutor.
Councilmember Mart?
Uh, all right, tough, tough topic, but I think that's all the questions I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle and I have a, a few questions. Uh, first of all, Judge Stewart, I, I really respect you and Christie and what you're trying to do with this program. I think it's a wonderful proposal. Um, we get a packet, uh, ahead of time and on page six of that packet, it says, individuals do not need to be involved with the criminal justice system before taking advantage of the resources or services available at the community court. And I was kind of surprised by that and I was just wondering, under what circumstances would people who aren't involved with the criminal justice system, how, how would they, how would they be referred to or how would, how would it happen that someone who's not involved with the criminal justice system would be involved with a community court?
Um, I, I think any number of ways. Our idea is, is that it's a service that we're providing as one of the branches of government in the city of Issaquah. And that if we've got a member of the community that, that needs these services, that, that didn't commit a theft, but, but needs to get ID or needs to get signed up for Apple healthcare or, or needs to, um, um, get into alcohol drug treatment, and we can provide this, this tool that we would make it open to them. And we're working obviously with the human services department. I know that the city is looking at hiring somebody um, to work with the police department. I don't remember that, the title that that person has. Um, but the idea would be that they could refer people to our court and that they would then be put in contact. Yeah, um, Councilmember De Michelle, if you came into the room, this, our court, we're using Zoom and it's very similar to this, right? So you sign on, uh, to one of our community court calendars and you don't have a case, we'd identify who you were. And if you were someone in need of services, we refer you to our case manager. Um, if you were from Issaquah, if you were one of the local folks from Issaquah, and you would then have access to the resources. I, I, I think it was just something that we wanted to provide the public because not everybody that uh, um, is, is having difficulty accessing these resources necessarily um, has committed a crime, but there are folks out there that have difficulty accessing the resources. So I think that's just a goal. In talking with the human services department, it would be a way in to the resources that the city's trying to provide anyway. Um, and we just offer a one stop shop. And in a non-COVID world, um, you, you show up at court at eight o'clock, um, you're charged with criminal trespass in the second degree and they have tables set around the room. And one table's got a sign that says, get your driver's license. One table signs, and you just bounce between the tables you've been assigned by your case manager. And you get set up with dates as far as what you need to do and you get set up with a plan. You come in front of the court at that first date, you say, this is what the plan is. Come back in a week, see this is where we are in the plan. Come back in a week. At some point, you've satisfied the plan. Now you're moving into treatment. We just want to offer the same option to, uh, uh, all members of the community that might be needing services. The city's trying to provide the services anyway. We just think that we're one of the tools, um, uh, that might be available to use them. I will tell you, at one point, uh, there was a, there was a young boy, we made it to the news, uh, early in the pandemic. There was a young boy that he and his friends had made all these masks. Um, and, uh, they were calling around and they recognized that a place that needs masks is going to be courts because we're forcing folks in off the streets. At that point in time, that was a concern and a lot of poor people that couldn't afford masks. And so we had these masks available to them. It's just a, uh, we're the only, one of the few places out there that forces this particular part of the marginalized community to come to a place. And so the resources available, we just want to make it available to more people.
Councilmember De Michelle, before we go to the next question, um, I just want to let you know that, um, Judge Stewart and his court have always sort of been ahead of the rest of us. And what we have been trying to do is identify those gaps and where interdisciplinary teams can start to pull resources together. So they've been doing an amazing job, but now we're weaving in those other roles and those new positions that the city has to try and really have a safety net, a public safety net that is as, you know, strong and robust as we can get it. And I'm sure you have another question.
I, I do, but, and I really appreciate that answer, Judge Stewart. Uh, thank you. And Mayor Polly as well. Thank you. Um, and, and the next question is, is somewhat related, but, uh, a defendant comes in front of you and, uh, is not just an individual, that person has a family. Sometimes the family needs help as well as the individual. Would, is there going to be opportunities here then to bring in, uh, family counseling or provide, um, where, where it's appropriate? Would people be able to access help for their families, uh, in whatever circumstances that might be in?
Um, I don't completely know the answer to that. I do know that obviously one, one of the resources that, that human services put in conduct with is ICRON. Um, and ICRON provides some of that service. So to the extent, uh, that the agencies that we're working with are open to that, yeah, we would be, we would, that, that would be part of the community. So we would be trying to do that. Sure.
One of, one of the other agencies we're looking at is Hope Link and I believe Hope Link has a, um, grant through the city and they offer, uh, family support counseling.
And that was Christie Shorn, our court manager.
That's big.
Forgot that part.
That's okay. Thank you, Christie. Um, Councilmember De Michelle, did you have any additional questions?
I just have one more and that is, uh, uh, you know, you're addressing nonviolent, uh, situations, people who are falling into that category. Sometimes, I, I mean, I hear often, so often of someone who's mentally ill, um, in a psychotic moment or experiencing psychosis, they become violent. Uh, and then, you know, basically primarily caused by that mental illness would, you know, if, is there any way to recognize that they have gone through that experience? They may not be overall a violent person, uh, and they would be able to get help through a court like this? Or would they be treated in a separate, in a separate, uh, process?
I wouldn't, I, I can't begin to talk about specific cases, but we deal with those cases. Um, uh, we deal with, and, and some of those ones are the ones that frighten me the most, are the ones I lose sleep over. And um, a lot of them are honestly, um, if you were to go into our jail or sit in jail, because we, 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 every time we let them out, they, they, it seems to escalate and, and so you're concerned. And so we're constantly looking for treatment for them. There are, and the answer is, uh, I don't know. And it's just, I don't know because it's going to, and, and this goes back to the Councilmember Mart's question with regard to the malicious mischief. The vast majority of malicious mischiefs may not qualify for community court. Some might. A significant percentage of the folks that you're talking about with regard to the mental health issues, uh, that are committing violent offenses, um, well, the violent offenses aren't going to qualify, but we have other tools available. Um, we, where we see the escalation, uh, people that are attacking cars, people that are attacking strangers on the streets. I don't know where the point comes between somebody walking up and attacking a stranger on the street and somebody walking up and killing someone on the street. I just don't know the answer to that. I do know that I'm limited in the amount of a sanction that I can pose. And, and if I impose a year in jail on person, at that point I'd lose all jurisdiction over them and all ability to control their future behavior. So we're constantly looking for typically releases to an inpatient type treatment, uh, environment for those folks. And Lou, at, at some point in a jail commitment, with the hopes that they'll get the treatment, whatever is needed, so that their behavior, um, can be controlled in the future and we're not seeing them back. Um, if it's a violent offense, they're probably not going to qualify for community court, but that does not mean we're looking for treatment. We're just doing it in a more traditional mode. Um, um, the, the way jail typically works is, um, at this level, you're trying to fix people to the, or help people fix themselves to the extent you can. But when the point comes that they, it's not working, you got to protect the community. And that's kind of why I say, when you, when you've got somebody that's committed these criminal trespass cases and you're locking them up for five or six hundred days, you're using five or six hundred of the days you could have been using for that person that you're truly protecting the community from. And, uh, um, I'm not saying that it's a positive thing to lock the mentally ill up. I'm just saying that we need to find appropriate treatment for them and we are. There's, there, there's a gal named Christie Mitchell, um, who, who provides services to the state that comes into our jail, meets with them and assesses them and then tries to find appropriate treatment to put them into at state expense. The great thing about all of this stuff, um, from a, from a budgetary perspective, is the resources that we're talking about, the vast majority of them are already paid for by somebody else. They're just. They're just looking for clients, we're finding a way to get them clients through our court. So we do have people that come into our jail when someone's in the jail. The way, the way it happens with someone with a mental illness, if they're, if they're a violent person, we have two categories, we have violent and nonviolent. The prosecutor has to make a determination as to whether they're competent. That's independent of being insane or in need of treatment. If they are incompetent, they can't prosecute. The cases are dismissed, they're referred to the county mental, mental health professionals to see whether or not they're going to be involuntarily committed. That almost never happens. And then they're released to the street because we can't prosecute somebody that's incompetent. If they're competent, then we have to make a determination as to whether they'll remain in custody or out of custody while the prosecutor and the defense attorney figure out what to do with them. And to the extent the defense attorney recognizes that this is not a case they're going to win, they're looking for appropriate treatment to try to get the person the medication or the counseling or whatever it is that they need to avoid further criminal behavior. So, but I don't think those folks will necessarily be handled through a, a, a community court environment because you're talking about violent offenses.
Thank you, Judge Stewart. Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. I am going to go to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. Judge, could you go back to your presentation to the slide 13 again? Great. So I have, oh, the, yep, that one. So I have three questions. First of all, it says, "We anticipate about 75 participants annually enroll in community court." Is there a certain level of your budget that supports this versus looking at the larger scope of the 480 cases?
Sure, sure. Um, we don't have a budget for community court. So, so essentially, what we're trying to do is we're trying to work into the confines of what we think we can do fitting under regular calendars. You have a prosecutor and a public defender that commit to so, that have signed up for so many court hours a week. And Kristi and I moving cases around and cases where we're, some calendars you recognize, we can double up calendars and squeeze community court calendars in there. So we're moving our calendars around to decide, to be able to proceed without the public defender and the prosecutor thinking that they're entitled to more money. I mean, if it works and the council, and this is a council decision, decides, hey, this is something that's working for us, we really want to expand on it, then you might be paying your prosecutor and your public defender for the additional court calendars that were involved. In addition, Puyallup, for instance, Puyallup, Andrea Beal's the judge in Puyallup. I'm real familiar with their program because Andrea Beal and I used to be part of a law firm called Stewart, Beal, McNichols and Armel. We were law partners and then she became the Puyallup judge. So I talk about it all the time. They decided to create a community court down in Puyallup. And what they did was, they, they did what we're, what we're working out upfront. They want to see whether it works, whether or not there was a need, whether or not we could push it forward. And they did it small, like we're doing it. Ultimately, they went to the center floor. It's, it's, it's a, it's a national organization that looks at alternatives for courts to try to reduce recidivism, reduce violence, that type of thing. And they got a grant and that grant entitled them, the grant entitled them to hire a case manager and gave them some additional money for court calendars. And now they've got a case manager and that case manager makes things run a lot more smoothly. Case manager allows you to handle more cases because the case manager is handling all these cases. What a case manager does is they're the person that meets with the individuals, does an assessment with regard to what the individuals' needs are. One of the issues that you have, it's really been helped by a virtual court because people can zoom in, but Isqwa's a small court. So let's say that we have two people on a calendar or one person on a calendar that we think is going to need information on getting something simple like signed up for a GED. That the service provider that provides a GED in a non-virtual world would have to drive to Isqwa, sit at a table, get up the whole morning for hours to meet with that one person. In a virtual world, we can schedule it so they zoom in, spend 15 minutes and they can go back to do whatever they were doing. In a big court like Olympia, which is a multi-person court, or Renton, which is a multi-person court, they might get that person to show up for court because they're going to meet with six or eight people in the morning. The case manager allows you to do is that the case manager's done the assessment, they can then figure out which providers you need that day because they know what the assessment resulted in, contact those providers and have those providers available for the particular clients. Case manager, because they're managing the cases, allows you to expand. And we frankly don't know how many cases the prosecutor's going to be willing to refer to community court. And because we don't know many, how many cases the prosecutor's going to be willing to refer, I think 75, we're basing upon what other courts have done their first year as far as what's a reasonable bite of the apple. And there are some cases that just aren't appropriate. And I, Councilmember Marts points out correctly, I mean, a serious malicious mischief, that's a violent offense. Someone that's, there's, you know, there's different kinds of people that steal stuff. Someone that's stealing peanut butter because they ran out of funds that month to want to feed their family is different than the person that's stealing large amounts of alcohol, which we see a lot of because they're selling it on the market to fund a drug habit. Those are two completely different people. But it's the same crime, here's them after 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine. So we don't know how many of these folks are going to fit into the category for a community court. We're anticipating it's probably going to be at least 75. We're going to try to limit it, the prosecutor's going to control that by referrals. But could it be bigger? Sure, it could be bigger.
Okay, and then I will go into just, one other question is timeline on this. What are you looking at for, kind of, when are you going to come back and evaluate whether or not you think this is a success, whether you're looking to expand? And what are those metrics that you would use?
Metrics is a really hard word for a guy that went to law school rather than one of those math schools. But we're starting up in July. I would think probably by the end of the year, we'll have a sense as to whether or not it's working. And when, when you do a community court, your first graduations come in about six months. You're going to be measuring it based upon the number of folks who there exceeds succeeding. Our public defender right now, Whitney Gardner, and partially Whitney's a resident of Isqwa and unlike a lot of cities don't have that, she's tremendously committed to the local community. So our FTA, we call FTAs, is Fakers to appear. In most courts throughout the area, FTA rate runs anywhere from 40 to 60%, which means about 40% of the folks show up for court. Our FTA rate runs around 10% because Whitney is constantly on top of all these folks. So she may, her very existence may increase the success of the community court because you need people that are very vested in it. And she likes the idea of being able to help her community. So I suspect that we'll know by about July how well we're doing. And then whether or not we expand is going to be up to you guys. I mean, that's, it's going to cost money to expand and we know that. Hiring a case manager, I can tell you, we just looked at it, we were, Kristi and I were laughing today because like I said, one of the courts in, that is the most successful is Olympia. It's, and it's one of the nationwide awards and stuff like that. And they just put out a request for, applications for a case manager for the city of Olympia Municipal Court with a pay range of $65,000 to $75,000. At the same time, they put it out, Thurston County put out a request for a community court manager at a pay range of $85,000 to $95,000, which led us to believe that possibly Thurston County is going to steal Olympia's case manager. I don't know, but those are the type of things that you're potentially looking at. And that's going to be up to, you know, where the council is, you know, obviously we've got a pandemic going on. I know that that's affecting budgets. We're willing to work within what we have right now. And if we can make it work, we're going to make it work. If everybody thinks it's something that we can make better, I'm going to be all for that. But we're also opening, I, I think it only works if it has support of the council, the police department. And so why it would be, it's a court calendar, we're a separate branch of government. I, I think it only works if the council is some, if something the council's behind. So we want to make you guys happy.
Thank you, Judge Stewart. I am not seeing any additional comments, but I just want to make sure that the council knows that Judge Stewart did throw out some dates there today about when he may be coming back. The criteria that we'll use is that there is enough data to evaluate effectiveness and how it ties into council's annual planning and budget process. So it may be six months or not. I just want to leave that out there a little bit because I want to make sure he's got the information he needs.
When I say six months, I mean six months after July 1st. I mean, so would be probably the earliest, so we'd at least get an idea of whether people will be in successful and it will take that long to know.
Yeah, I think that is great. I have a comment from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman here. Judge Stewart and Kristi Sharn, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done. I'm, I'm really excited about the program and really encouraged about the information that you, you brought to us and about the opportunity that this has to make a real difference. One of my concerns with all the, you know, money we, we throw it, we throw it, a lot of the problems we're seeing is that they're not necessarily addressing specific problems. And I think this program, the way it's presented to me or to us, is that it addresses precise problems that people are having that are keeping them down on their luck or in certain circumstances that are, that are just, that are just bad and keeping them down. And I, I appreciate the way that you described the, the potential nonviolent circumstances that could qualify and the thoughtfulness regarding that. I just really am encouraged by this program and I'm really, really glad that you're starting it. And I'll be excited to see the, the results. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Judge Stewart, Kristi, thank you so much for coming and sharing the presentation. I wish we could see you in person, but we're still doing these things digitally and look forward to having you back for an update in the future.
You should know that I've lost 65 pounds in the pandemic. So when you see me, it'll be less of me than you've seen before, so.
Oh goodness, so there are some success stories here in the pandemic. Congratulations, Judge Stewart, and thank you for coming tonight, and thank you, Kristi.
You ever need anything from us, let us know.
Absolutely. But thank you very much. The next item of business this evening is the consent calendar and it was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you very much. I do want to note that there was a minor correction brought forward by Councilmember De Michele to the February 16th council meeting minutes, Agenda Item B, to remove the dangling letters DE following it was moved by regarding the motion to direct the administration, or E, the nonprofit business assistance. The clerk's office has circulated a revised copy of the minutes and this corrected version will be adopted on approval of the consent calendar. Does any, if any council member wishes to remove something from the chat, please indicate, sorry, remove anything from the consent agenda, please indicate in the chat. And I see Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman. I would like to bring down Agenda Bill 8146, please.
Thank you very much. Are there any other council members who would like to bring any items down from the consent agenda? And I will give you a second or two to use the chat. Okay, AB 8146, oh, sorry, oh, sorry, here we go. AB 8146 will be brought down and put under regular business as the first item that we deal with this evening. And now I would be looking for a motion to remove what is remaining on the consent calendar. Council President Hunt.
I move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Thank you, and Deputy, Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I'll go to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Starting with Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Marts?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you very much, City Clerk, that passes unanimously. So we will move to regular business and the first item we will deal with this evening is AB 8146, which was brought down off consent. And I will go over to Councilmember Goodman for comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman here. Agenda Bill 8146 is, contains a resolution that the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee worked on together. And I will let each of our committee members speak for themselves, but it's my understanding that this resolution has unanimous agreement among the three of us. The change that I wanted to propose would be, was circulated, I, I believe by the city administrator, and it would be a Section 2 about procedure. And it would have the ad hoc committee consider, or sorry, would have the ad hoc committee address any requests that would come to consider anything within Title 18 being considered on a separate schedule or track than the overall Title 18 that update overhaul that we're working on right now. And so it really addresses the procedure. So it would go to ad hoc and then it would come back to the city council to make a decision. And the ad hoc would be considering the, the guidelines or criteria, whatever you want to call it. That's in Section 1 of the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Do you have anything else to add or would you like me to move to the other two members?
You can move to the other two members. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks, this is Council President Hunt. I agree with what Councilmember Goodman was talking about. I do believe that we should probably make a motion. So there's a motion on the floor to be, to be considered. So I will go ahead and make the main motion. And the main motion is, so I move to approve Resolution Number 202106, adopting criteria for considering changes to Title 18 separately from Title 18 Land Use Code Update Project.
I'll second the motion, Councilmember Goodman.
Councilmember Goodman seconded the motion. So it's been moved and seconded. Council President Hunt, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I, I agree with Councilmember Goodman. We did work on this together and we, and we thought it would be helpful to have some more information about the procedure. And that's why, that's why there's a change being proposed right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
I have nothing to add.
And I'm not seeing any other folks wanting to comment in the chat, but I'll give it a second. Okay, I have a comment from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So it seems to me that the next would be a motion to amend to add the proposed Section 2. And I can read that proposed Section 2 just for the record. I would, I would like to amend the motion to amend the resolution to add the following language. "Section 2, Procedure. The ad hoc committee shall make a recommendation to the city administration and city council concerning any proposal to place topics within the Title 18 scope of work on a separate schedule or track. The ad hoc committee shall base its recommendation on the criteria set forth in Section 1. The city council shall consider the ad hoc committee's recommendation and may approve, reject, or approve the recommendation with modifications using the criteria set forth in Section 1."
And do I have a second? Council President Hunt?
This is Council President Hunt, a second.
Thanks. So this is an amendment to the main motion. Would anybody like to provide comment or discuss? And I'll look to the chat. And I wonder if the city clerk would actually put that amendment into the chat for me? Awesome. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to read the amendment to the, I am seeing Councilmember Hall. I wonder why it took so long to show up?
Just real quick, thank you, Mayor Polly, this is Councilmember Hall. I just wanted to say this seems very thoughtful to me and makes a lot of sense. So I'll be supporting this motion, thanks.
Thank you very much. So the amendment to the resolution, Section 2, Procedure. "The ad hoc committee shall make a recommendation to the city administration and city council concerning any proposal to place topics within the Title 18 scope of work on a separate schedule or track. The ad hoc committee shall base its recommendation on the criteria set forth in Section 1. The city council shall consider the ad hoc committee's recommendation and may approve, reject, or approve the recommendation with modifications using the criteria..." reject, or approve the recommendation with modifications using the criteria set forth in Section 1." It has been moved and seconded, and I'll go to the city clerk for a roll call vote on the amendment.
Starting with Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you. The amendment passes unanimously, so we're back to the main motion. And I will look in the chat to see if there's any additional comments or discussion the council would like to have for a call for vote. I'll give it a few seconds. Okay. Back to the proposed main motion, which has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2021-06, adopting criteria for considering changes to Title 18 separately from the Title 18 Land Use Code Update Project. And I will go back to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Starting with Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously, and that was AB 8146 on the council resolution. The next item under regular business is AB 8151, expressing support for a state transportation revenue package. And the action before council this evening will be to approve the resolution. And I would like to invite Jean Paul, our management analyst, to introduce this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jean Paul, the management analyst in the executive office. The request from the administration for this agenda item tonight is for the council to approve a resolution. The proposed resolution in tonight's packet expresses support for transportation funding and urges the state legislature to pass a funding package during the current session. We are joined this evening by Marian Daca and Holly Cochi, two governmental affairs consultants from Gordon &amp; Thomas Honeywell. They're part of the team supporting the city while Shelley Helders is on maternity leave. Holly is going to provide an overview of the House and Senate revenue frameworks, and then there will be an opportunity for questions and discussion. So Holly, please take it away.
Thank you, Jean, for the introduction, and good evening, Mayor and council members again. My name is Holly Cochi, and I am joined by my colleague Marian Daca. As I'm sure you all know, like Jean had said, Shelley Helders is currently on maternity leave. So Marian and I are before you today and continue to work hard to fill in for Shelley as she spends this time with her family. And of course, Brianna Murray on our team is leading the charge for the city as well. Before you this evening is a resolution encouraging the state legislature to adopt a transportation revenue proposal this session. To give a bit of background, in addition to cities, there is a broad coalition that is pushing to have the legislature adopt a transportation revenue package. That coalition thought one way to create more momentum behind a revenue package would be for cities to adopt resolutions. A similar effort was done in 2015 when the Connecting Washington package was adopted. So with that bit of background on where this resolution stems from, I'm going to dive into where we are currently at in the legislative session and the two transportation package outlines we have seen from both Transportation Committee chairs, Representative Jake Fai and Senator Steve Hobbs. The legislature is over halfway through the session. We're not counting. Overall, the House passed 200 of its 747 bills, and the Senate passed 208 out of its 695 bills. That means there are about 400 bills remaining under consideration. The House of Representatives and the Senate have shifted from approving bills on the floor to now meeting in committees, holding public hearings and voting on bills, but the opposite chamber approved. Bills need to pass out of their respective policy committees by March 26th to continue to advance through the legislative process. On March 17th, so coming up, the Washington State Economic and Revenue Forecast Council is needing to discuss the March revenue forecast. It is anticipated to reflect higher actual and anticipated revenue collections than the previous November forecast. The Senate was anticipated to release its proposed budgets shortly after the release of the revenue forecast. However, last week, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan into law, which will provide the state with 4.25 billion in federal funds. It may take the legislature an additional week or so to release its initial operating capital and transportation budget proposals to reflect both the revenue forecast and the federal funds. I will note that the federal funding has the ability to be used to backfill the revenue loss experienced by the state in both tolls and gas tax. However, all three of the state budget writers are hoping to use this funding. And this funding would not only address all of the state's needs such as our, or I'm sorry, it would not address all of the state's needs such as our legal obligation to fish culverts and the backlog of maintenance and preservation. Again, both the House and Senate have released their versions of a transportation package. I'm going to start with Representative Fai's proposal. His is set to raise 26 billion over 16 years. As we expected, this initial draft of his transportation package does not include a proposed list of projects to be funded throughout the package. Instead, projects will be added throughout the legislative process as legislators commit their support to voting in favor of the transportation revenue package. It was also announced that revenues generated within his proposal would not be bonded, which means this package can pass the legislature by a simple majority vote. The proposal includes the following revenue sources. So an 18-cent gas tax, 10-cent increase in 2021, and an 8-cent increase in 2022. After 2022, the gas tax will be indexed to inflation. There's also a carbon fee, $15 per ton in 2021 to 2023, $20 per ton in 23 to 25, and $25 per ton in 25 through 27. There's a 1% rental car sales tax increase, 3%, or I'm sorry, a 3-cent increase in diesel fuel tax to be dedicated to specific projects, and various weight and user fee increases. And then Chair Hobbs has also released his transportation revenue proposal, which aims to invest 18 to 19 billion over 16 years in both state and local transportation systems. The proposal includes two options for the state to generate funding for transportation. One is a carbon fee of $20 per metric ton. And the second is a cap and invest system which limits greenhouse gas targets and utilizes resulting revenue for transportation purposes. Both options would include a 6-cent gas tax increase, an assessment on new construction, a fee on four higher vehicles like Uber and Lyft, and automobile parts sales tax, rental car tax, a sales and use tax on bicycles, and some other fee increases. The proposal would generate 15 billion in new revenue, which, once bonded, would make about 18 to 19 billion available for investments. So unlike Chair Fai's proposal, since Chair Hobbs' proposal would be bonded, it does require a two-thirds vote. So as you all know, the city has two legislative priorities in the 2021 legislative agenda that are tied to a new transportation package. The first being the widening for State Route 18, and the second is the Interstate 90 under overcrossing. The state has already committed roughly 175 million to SR 18 widening effort, but the current estimated cost for completion of the project is 744 million due to the Department of Transportation's most recent analysis of the project's needs. The Senate version of the transportation package includes 500 million for this project, and we have also been notified that Representative Ramos has submitted a request for 500 million as well to be included in the House proposal. There is still an effort to try and decrease the cost of this project, considering how high it's become in the last year. So that it's likely, that's likely where the 500 million number is coming from. The city is also requesting 3.4 million in the 2325 biennium to begin the pre-design and environmental documentation process for the I-90 crossing project. This project is not identified currently in a draft transportation package. So really, over the next several weeks, the transportation committees in the House and Senate will further refine their proposals and contemplate the merits of a cap and invest revenue versus a carbon fee. Where it will be challenging to move a transportation package forward really lies within that broader conversation about carbon pricing. And we expect it will take at least a few more weeks before we see any transportation revenue proposals, most likely shortly after the budgets are released, which we expect to be by the end of the month. So with that, Marian and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Marian. I'm looking into the chat to see if council members have questions or comments. I wonder, I'm not sure, Holly, if you can add some additional information, but I sit on the CLTC team, which is advocating for Highway 18, and it's a coalition of cities and chambers. Can you provide a little bit more information about the discussion around including culverts in State Route 18 versus constructing culverts within State Route 18 but funding them from a different package than the transportation package? Has that been a discussion that's been going on down in Olympia?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I probably would have to get back to you on that breakdown. I don't, I don't have that memorized. So if I can get back to you on that question, unless Marian can chime in, but I can certainly get back to you.
Thank you for the question. I can just add the context. I don't know the specifics of the project and how culverts would be integrated in that specific project. However, both the House and Senate proposals both are allocating $3.5 billion over 16 years towards fish barrier removal. Currently, both chairs have indicated that they would like to take a more coordinated approach and go watershed by watershed versus previous barrier removal was odds and ends, and then, you know, the state would invest significant amount of money on removing one barrier, and then you would be in the middle of city barriers. So they are hoping to have a much more coordinated effort. If that answers your question. If not, we can follow up with more information.
Marian, that helps. That very much reflects what I've heard is that we have two overlapping issues and what funding is done, and programmatically, how do you get the best bang for the buck and the most effective for the watershed. So thank you very much. I think that's helpful. Looking to see, there is a motion in the chat. Do I have somebody to move the motion? Council President Hunt?
Thanks. This is Council President Hunt. I move to approve Resolution Number 2021-07, expressing support for state transportation funding, including the adoption of a new transportation revenue package.
And second, Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, and I'll keep my eye on the chat, looking for questions or comments. Councilmember Hall, followed by Council President Hunt. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. Just a quick reminder to my colleagues on council that I am actually an employee of the state legislature. And as an employee, our legislative ethics rules say that we're not allowed to lobby the state legislature. So I will be recusing myself from tonight's vote, and I hope none of you have a problem with that. Thanks.
All head nods, no. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hall. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. And I think that this resolution does a good job of explaining why the transportation package is so important for our community. It explains the safety, explains the economic value of this, the importance of mobility for lots of different aspects of quality of life. And I think it does a good job at explaining all of that in the whereas statements. The one area that I did noted, and because it is actually a really important component of this work and also very costly, the one area where I thought it could have more explanation of the city's position or the city's reasons for feeling that this is such an important transportation package and so important that it be passed right now is around the fish passage barrier clause. And so I would like to make a motion to add one piece of information to that clause in particular, and then otherwise am in support of this. So I will move to add to the seventh whereas clause. Removal of fish passage barriers is important for the survival and restoration of migrating fish populations.
So, City Clerk, if I can get that amendment in the chat box, that would be great. And I'm looking for a second. Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
The amendment's been moved and seconded. It is to add some language that I can't yet read. I think it's pretty clear without me rereading it. I'll just open it up for comments right now. And Council President Hunt, would you like to speak to it first?
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said, I think that this resolution is very strong. It explains in many different ways why this is so important. And I do, I agree with those reasons. The one whereas clause that I think we could better explain our position is this one about the fish passage. It currently says that how much it will cost to meet an injunction. And because fish survival and salmon populations in particular are very important to our community, I thought we should explain that in this whereas clause. And then also, it better aligns with the rest of our legislative agenda where we do talk about supporting the state's efforts, especially the watershed-based effort to remove fish passage barriers across the state. So that language is actually already elsewhere in our legislative agenda, and I thought this would better align.
Thank you. And I am looking in the chat to see if there's anyone else who would like to make comments. And I would also ask if the council is interested in having our lobbyists that are here this evening provide general comments on the amendment. Just look for heads of nods or not necessary. Kind of getting a not necessary. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Well, I was actually typing in question when you said that. And I would like our lobbyists to provide any comments. I can't imagine that it's, that the language is any problem at all, but I would like our lobbyists to address how it's helpful or, I suppose, potentially not. Thank you.
Great. So Holly or Marian? Marian?
Sure, I can take this one. Thank you very much, Councilmember, for the question and for the opportunity to comment. I do think it's very helpful to add to the resolution. Goes without saying that fish passage barrier removal is not only very important for the environment, but also very important to make sure that we are taking care of those watershed by watershed and not just investing with the state, but also within local governments and in counties. So I think highlighting that is definitely on par with what other cities are also doing, as well as the work of the Association of Washington Cities and Washington Counties. So it's very great.
Thank you, Marian.
Thank you.
I am not, thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I am not seeing any other questions or comments, so I will ask the city clerk for a roll call vote, and I'll just reread the resolution. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Resolution Number 2021-07, expressing support for state transportation funding, including the adoption of a new transportation revenue package.
Mayor Polly, can I clarify? I don't believe a vote's been taken on the amendment.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you very, very much. Okay, so the first vote we'll be taking tonight is actually on the amendment to the motion, which has been moved and seconded and reads, whereas removal of fish passage barriers is important for the survival and restoration of migrating fish populations. Thank you for that. And, City Clerk, can you call for the vote on the amendment to the main motion?
Yes, starting with Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall is excused from voting. Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
That's six i's, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes with six in favor and one abstaining. The regular motion on the table, which I believe now is ready for a vote, is a motion to approve Reso- to approve resolution number 2021-07, expressing support for state transportation funding, including the adoption of a new transportation revenue package. City Clerk, can you call the roll call vote?
Yes, starting with Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall is excused from voting. Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That's six in favor with one abstaining. I would really like to thank, uh, Holly and Marion for coming tonight and talking us through this resolution. Uh, we will be moving on to the next item of business, uh, which is AB 8150, Transit Oriented Development, or TOD. It's a memorandum of understanding in short form for us, for that is an MOU. Uh, we are looking for some direction this night, tonight, from council to the city administration. This is the first council touch point on the updated memorandum of understanding. There is not a formal council motion being requested tonight, but rather informal feedback with action anticipated in April. And I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, members of the public. My name is Andrea Snyder, and I'm the Deputy City Administrator and, uh, Project Manager for the Transit Oriented Development Project, uh, also will be referred to as the TOD Project this evening. I believe, uh, Tisha will be sharing the presentation shortly. Um, while she's pulling that up, also with joining, uh, joining me tonight for this presentation are Dan Landis from King County Housing Authority, as well as Hal Ferris from Spectrum Development. So they'll be here, available to answer any questions that council may have. Um, present next slide, please. So the purpose of our discussion tonight is for the administration to get feedback on the memorandum of understanding, which I may refer to as the MOU, um, with the city's development partners. Again, that's KCHA, King County Housing Authority, and Spectrum Development, um, for the Transit Oriented Development Project. And before we go any further, I just want to offer an apology for this alphabet soup, uh, because there are a lot of acronyms, and I am sure that I'm going to slip up and refer to the acronyms. And, um, you know, Mayor Polly always does a great job of, of trying to make sure we're speaking in a common tongue, and I will do that, but please, uh, if I get too caught up in the shorthand, um, please, uh, pause, uh, stop me and let me know how I can clarify and make sure that I'm speaking in English. Okay, thank you. Next slide, please, Tisha. Uh, so as Mayor Polly indicated, the direction needed tonight is really council feedback on the, any concerns or changes that you have over the updated language in the memorandum of understanding. Specifically, what would be helpful to hear from council is if you have any concerns or changes you'd like to see on the programming of the site, uh, the design standards exceptions that are included in the MOU, and any other changes, of course, that, um, that council would like to see. And then the second piece of information that we're seeking is if council is comfortable considering the purchase and sale agree, considering the MOU with the purchase and sale agreements, um, or if council would like to see the MOU again before they consider, um, approval of the purchase and sale agreements and the, and the memorandum of understanding. And we'll talk about the purchase and sale agreements a little bit later on this evening. Little bit of background on this. The purpose of the memorandum of understanding is that it will guide the work that's completed between now and when we form the development agreement with the development partners. Um, and it will form the basis for that development agreement. So it really sets the groundwork, um, for, for, between now and then, and, and will help us form that development agreement. Uh, it will also provide increased predictability and certainty for the city in terms of what to expect with the project, as well as for the development team. That's really the intent behind the MOU. Uh, this, uh, we're asking city council to update the MOU. Uh, we had two, a memorandum of understanding, one with each development, uh, organizations, one with Spectrum, one with King County Housing Authority, and those were approved by council in 2017. And what we're asking is to update that language based off of what we've learned since then and the work that's been accomplished since then, and also to consolidate that. Instead of having one for each development, uh, organization and development partner, we're looking to have it be a three-party agreement between the city, uh, Spectrum and King County Housing Authority. We believe that provides additional clarity for each party. Um, also, uh, as we discussed last week at the study session, the administration is currently negotiating purchase and sale agreements with Lumen, formerly known as CenturyLink, and, uh, the development team. Those are also three-party agreements. And, um, and we would ask that the updated MOU be an exhibit to the purchase and sale agreement. So when the city, uh, should the city decide to sell property, um, in exchange for this TOD project opportunity, that the city be provided some certainty as to what types of public benefits it's getting, et cetera. And so that's why we're suggesting it would be an exhibit to any purchase and sale agreement to be considered by council. And, uh, finally, the city council vote on the purchase and sale agreements is anticipated in April, so we are working on that. We're nearing the final steps and stages of that. We'd be coming back to city council for your consideration in just a few short weeks. So I'd like to spend some time this evening talking about some of the key provisions within the MOU that, um, have changed and others that have not changed since that first, um, those first MOUs were approved. Things that have not changed, uh, the general understanding of the project. So general description of the project and the, and what we expect to be included in the project, those, those things have not changed in the updated language. Also, um, discussion of, uh, community accessible recreation, that's what it was called in the first MOU, well, how we're referring to it in the second is a public plaza. Uh, the second meaning of the updated language, referring to it as a public plaza. Parking requirements, considerations for structured parking, that language has not changed in the updated MOU being proposed for you tonight. Um, development of 13th Avenue Northwest, we'll talk about that a little bit in more detail a little bit later, but, um, the requirement for developing 13th Avenue Northwest, which is a new roadway, um, that remains unchanged. Uh, as well as the provision of the multifamily tax exemption benefits, that's something that, uh, was contemplated in the first MOUs passed and, um, is reflected in the updated language. And same with the impact fees waived for affordable housing. Those impact fees are, uh, part of existing city code and something we contemplated with the first, uh, version of the MOUs, and again, it's reflected in the updated language. So all of those things are unchanged. Things that, uh, have been changed in the updated language for your consideration, we have more detail on the programming of the site. We talk about 163, uh, or more units of affordable, uh, housing, and we really break down what that level of affordability looks like. This is unchanged, uh, for those of you who may recall, there was a presentation on, uh, this project last February. This information is consistent with that, um, same presentation that we had about a year ago. Um, and I will pause for a question.
Thank you, Deputy City Administrator. Um, Councilmember De Michelle?
Uh, thank you. Uh, we heard comments tonight about this mix, um, and concerns about this mix. Um, and I have a couple of questions, um, and maybe Mr. Ferris could help answer these as well, but it's my understanding that this kind of mix of different levels of, uh, income AMI, um, have a great deal to do with the viability of the project for the developer. Um, and that's just my understanding. Maybe somebody needs to correct that impression, but that's, that's what I've thought and heard for many years, is, uh, that this, uh, kind of mix makes a development like this possible. And then could you, uh, clarify the use of the term workforce housing? Uh, would any part of this, uh, be designated as what we've heard in the, the term workforce housing? What part of it would be, would be that? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I would like to see if perhaps Dan Landis from King County Housing Authority would like to weigh in and help answer your questions. Dan, are you able to respond?
Uh, yeah, sure. I'm Dan Landis from King County Housing Authority, and, uh, I, we, we are, uh, in the process of looking at the design and seeing if there isn't a way that we could increase the number of units in our side of the project. So what's being developed here are two different, uh, towers, one that King County Housing Authority will, will own and manage, or, and the other one that Spectrum Development Solutions is, is developing. And I'll let, uh, Hal Ferris speak to, to that side, but the 60% and 40% AMI units are in our building, and if we're able to increase the size of our building, the, the number of units that are in those, uh, that, that are at, at those various income levels would increase as well. Uh, some, uh, one of the comments that, uh, you got earlier from a citizen was that, uh, it would be a shame, it's a shame that, uh, the 40% units aren't lower. Um, the reason that they're targeted at 40% right now is, uh, because that's what the King County TOD funds that we receive for this project, uh, allowed. They did not allow deeper income targeting, although there's a fix moving forward in the state legislature right now that would allow you to go lower than that. But we do intend to have, uh, subsidies in those units so that anybody below 40% of area median income could afford to live there. So hopefully that's helpful. Uh, the reason that the, the units that are at 60 and 40 is smaller than the rest is because our project is smaller than the other part, and that is because we have, uh, limited public funds that we can draw on, and it's, we, it's not feasible for us, uh, to, to build a bigger project unless we can do it, uh, just make what we've done a little bit more efficient, and we're, we're working on that.
I wanted to add to what Dan said, just because I think there's some confusion on the numbers here.
And this would be Hal Ferris from Spectrum Development.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hal Ferris from Spectrum Development. Um, the 163 units are the number of affordable units, those that are at 80% and below, and then there's approximately the same number that are above 80%. So it's not 163 units total with only half of them being affordable. All 163 units are rent restricted units for the life of the project. And then the remainder are market rate or, and to, uh, address Councilmember De Michelle's question, the work, workforce housing is generally considered from 60% to 100% of area median income. And all of our units in the, in the, uh, southern building would fall within that category. So we have very few units that would be over 100% of area median income, and they're just barely over. So the project in itself is both a, um, low income, moderate income, and workforce level housing in its entirety.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Councilmember De Michelle, did you have an additional question?
No, that was very helpful. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, let's continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is Andrea Snyder again. Um, other elements for programming of the site include the Opportunity Center. The Opportunity Center is, uh, about a 10,000 square foot, um, facility that the city would own, so it would be condominiumized, and the city would retain ownership of that portion of the development. And the Opportunity Center would provide, um, medical services, a variety of medical services for low income populations. And we're working with a tenant who would be able to provide those services for the community. Another component of this project, uh, is the LEO, or Life Enrichment Opportunities, that they would have a space reserved for them, for an adult family home, uh, for adults And other, uh, key provisions that you'll see different from the last MOU, design standards exceptions. Um, the first one of those being a, an exception to the step back requirement is something that our development, development team is seeking. This picture that you see here, uh, is not a picture of the TOD project. It's just meant to represent what a step back is. And so above a certain height, the project would be required to step back, um, from the base to preserve views and sightlines. Uh, that's the intent of the code, and they're looking for a small exception to that. Uh, additional exceptions include, uh, loading dock size, the central isiqua, design and development standards, uh, have standards for how, how wide a loading dock might be, and they're looking to reduce that size to make it tailored to the site and also fit within the core, um, street standards that the city has. And, um, the other, uh, another item related to the design standards exceptions is the density bonus. So should the project require two additional stories, uh, then does it meet our density bonus requirements, which, um, require a certain level of public benefits be provided? And what you, uh, should see in the packet and the proposed MOU that we have before you this evening is that we feel, you know, that, uh, the affordable housing provided with this project does meet those density bonus requirements. Additional, uh, key provisions that you'll see change is the discussion of 13th Avenue Northwest. And as I stated earlier, this is a new roadway that, um, is reflected in the central isiqua plan to help increase the city transportation grid, and it's reflected here in this map in the slashed purple lines between Newport Way and Maple going north, south. And that's, that would be 13th Avenue Northwest. And, um, the, this development would be required to build out that new street, but there is a small problem in that there's a very large and complicated telecommunications hub that was installed by CenturyLink years ago. That telecommunications hub happens to be, uh, pretty much right in the middle of, uh, what that 13, what would be 13th Avenue Northwest. And so we've been working with the development team on how to stay true to the understanding that they would be able to develop, uh, at least part of the 13th Avenue Northwest roadway. And so we, um, that's something that we would need to develop further as we talk, go through the entitlement process and go through the development negotiations and finalize design, that they may need some additional exceptions to what that roadway, uh, would, would look like so that we could maintain that very important piece of telecommunications infrastructure where it is, because we understand that it's nearly impossible to move. Um, so that's another exception that's noted in, in the proposed language. And, you know, I'd like, uh, I'd like to also make sure that I say this explicitly in the presentation, that this MOU that we're proposing in the updated language, it's not a binding MOU. And, um, the purpose is that it helps create some predictability, um, provide a mutual understanding of our discussions to date, uh, but that there would be a lot that we would need to finalize in the development agreement process, and that's really when all of these provisions would become final. There would be additional ability for us to finalize design, to learn a little bit more from the community and hear more from you before any of this language becomes binding.
Deputy City Administrator Snyder, I wonder if we could take a quick question? Um, Councilmember Martz, was it related to a certain slide?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I withdrew my question.
You withdrew? You withdrew? It comes through like a few second delay. I apologize, Deputy City Administrator, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in general, uh, there are a couple of options before city council. One is to revise the proposed MOU language, and the other is to not update the MOU. Those are really the options that city council may exercise. Uh, next slide, please, Tisha. The, uh, administration recommends that we update the MOU language, again, to provide increased clarity.
clarity for all parties involved. And again, we also ask, next slide, please, Tisha, that City Council provide feedback on the MOU as proposed this evening. Before we get to that, this is the approximate timeline of what we consider the major milestones that we can anticipate moving forward. This should look a little bit familiar because we presented this last week at the study session. But the purchase and sale agreements and the memorandum of understanding would be developed further and considered here in the month of March and coming back to Council for approval or for your consideration in April. And following that, the development agreement and site development permit would be submitted in September of 2021, again, with the MOU forming the basis for that development agreement. We anticipate the development agreement would be complete in the first quarter of next year. And the Lumen, formerly known as CenturyLink, their relocation site would be complete and constructed by the end of next year, Q4 2022, with the TOD project construction itself being complete in 2025. And so again, we're looking tonight for feedback from City Council for any concerns or changes that you have over the updated language, specifically on the programming of the site, any of the design standards exception language, or any other changes to the MOU, as it please Council. And then, and then whether Council is comfortable considering the MOU with the purchase and sale agreements, or if we need another touch point before we reach that April date.
Thank you, Deputy City Administrator. I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful if you could leave that last slide up as we sort of move through the seven council members and allow them to provide input. And I just want to remind council members in the public that we are not taking a vote today. This council is just providing feedback. And I will look into the chat to see who volunteers, and then I'll just start going alphabetical if nobody volunteers. So we need to hear from all seven, and it could be as simple as everything is fine, or people may have some questions and comments who need to dig a little bit deeper before. So let's start with Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Yeah, everything is fine. I think there's, this is a, what the public needs to understand is that this is a very complicated set of balancing equations of all the partners involved, and it is not easy to just move one piece of it, you know? If you increase the affordability, that basically changes the fundamental balance on the deal, right? Because a more subsidized unit is more expensive. So this process has been going on longer than any other issue before the city, I believe, that I've been involved in in 11 years. But all the parties involved seem to be moving towards a place that they have agreement. And I continue to believe that the benefit served by this project is important and substantial and would be exciting for us to have as a city. So I am good with the proposed MOU changes as recommended by the city. Thank you.
I'm just going to double check with you, Councilmember Martz. It's also in response to the second question, process one on comfortable considering the memorandum of understanding with the purchase and sale agreement.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have some questions from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I just want to go back to the MOU itself and under the recital, the second-to-last one, H, the last sentence, it says, "Parties recognize that Spectrum and KCHA's financing is limited, and the ability to provide amenities will be restricted by the availability of funds." Can someone tell me what that means?
Sure. Deputy City Administrator Snyder, who would be best prepared to answer Deputy Council President Ray's question?
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. This is Andrea Snyder. I am going to ask for perhaps Hal Ferris to provide a little bit more insight, but I think the general point that they're trying to convey here is that, referring really to Councilmember Martz's point, once you start to add more things to the project, that can also affect other parts of the project. And so if at this time, Council would like to consider additional public benefits, then that would be something that we'd really need to discuss with our partners. In addition, there are concerns about costs related to some of the public benefits and that we would need to make sure that the project can, once fully designed, that we can take on all of those costs. And I think we've talked at Council before about the Opportunity Center. That's certainly part of it, and I know Council has pledged a certain amount of money to help ensure that that can proceed. Hal Ferris, would you like to add anything more to that?
This is Hal Ferris from Development. I thought actually Councilmember Martz and Deputy City Administrator Snyder did a very good job of answering your question. And it is a balance. And we worked really hard, the Housing Authority and ourselves, to try to honor and keep forward all of the public benefits that the city had originally outlined to make this project go. And believe me, there's a whole bunch of moving parts behind this that you can't, you know, we don't go into every time. And it's been a difficult balancing act. But we feel like we're honoring our commitment. If anything, we are hopeful to improve, as you heard Dan speak earlier, on the total count of affordable units that could be part of this project. So that's, that's what we continue to strive to achieve, which was kind of the overarching goal of the project itself.
Thank you, Hal. Deputy Council President Ray, do you have any other questions? And are you prepared to make some comments?
I have, I'll make some comments. My first one is I'm uncomfortable with that. It appears to me that we're going to take all the risk, and we have a real long history of not getting what we bargained for on development projects. And that looks like a get-out-of-jail-free card to me, and I'm not comfortable with the city taking all the risk on this. So that is a big deal to me. So that's the first, my first one. So I, in terms of other changes to the MOU, yeah, I have some that would make me happier. In terms of the second question, I'm fine considering the MOU and the PSA at the same time.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michele. So I will admit that approaching the MOU, I approached it with some trepidation because generally it's a reading slog, and I'm not always sure what this, that, or the other thing means. And so I want to compliment, I presume that was Deputy Administrator Snyder who wrote the MOU, it was exceptionally easy to read, and so I appreciated the clarity on everything. I am generally just satisfied with it. There are two different places, I believe, in there where it says this is a non-binding agreement, that we will have time to reauthorize it, to look at it again. We'll have a point of looking at it when we get the purchase and sale agreement, and then when the development agreement comes through. So I am very comfortable. I think it lays out the questions that need to be answered in the negotiations ahead, and so I'm very comfortable with it. The setback exception, I thought, was well explained, and I understood that. I could use a little bit more information about the landing dock exception, because I'm a very visual person, and I couldn't quite, couldn't quite see what that was about. But overall, I'm comfortable with this, and I am comfortable considering the MOU with the PSA when it's brought to us in April. And if Deputy Administrator Snyder wants to talk a little bit about the landing dock, that's fine, or not, that's fine too. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. I think I'm going to continue the rotation through and give Andrea a chance to address things at the end if a couple of things come up. But thank you very much for that. We'll move to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I'm wondering if you can talk to me a little bit more about 13th Avenue Northwest. I understand the concept of Lumen having a telecom hub in the area, meaning that that would require rerouting a planned road. But I'm one, I'm trying to get my head around this concept, what that means for the city as far as costs, what that means for our road infrastructure, and why in general something would be built in an area where we have a, where we had a planned road network that could not be removed. I don't understand that part.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I think the quick answer is the Lumen infrastructure predates our road network planning. So there'd be one little one. Deputy City Administrator Snyder, some more information?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Andrea Snyder. That's exactly correct. So we, that infrastructure definitely predates the concept and plan for the 13th Avenue Northwest roadway. That roadway, rather, the infrastructure is in the street towards the edge of the parcel. There's also some other complications in terms of the property boundary dispute. I think that was also referred to in the MOU that the city would work with the partners to try to help resolve that property boundary dispute. But that telecommunications infrastructure hub is right on that boundary, which is where the city had envisioned that street without knowing that that, not realizing that that piece of infrastructure was there. And so Lumen would need to retain an easement to be able to maintain that infrastructure, which presents some difficulty. As I said earlier, we're looking at finalizing design options, and it's possible that we may still be able to work the site in a way that we can still construct that full roadway as intended. But it's a difficult maneuver. And so what, I don't know that that would mean anything in terms of city cost, what it would translate into, what does that roadway look like? And how does that defer from the standards? I'm sorry, deter from the standards. And so we had planned on that being a core street. Core streets have certain standards associated with them. We may initially only be able to build out half of that street. So some circulation benefits to the city and related to that project would occur, but not as we would expect for a full core street. And without pulling out more diagrams and diving into the details, especially since we have not finalized design, that's kind of the best general idea that I can give you. Though if you have more questions, perhaps Hal Ferris can speak to those.
Thank you. And I'll go back to Councilmember Walsh. Did you have additional questions? Because I know you also indicated you had comments.
Yeah, no additional questions. That gives me enough. Thank you, Andrea. And so just comments generally, I am comfortable with moving forward and considering the MOU and the PSAs together. I appreciate all of the updates and all of the late nights and early mornings and all extra time that has gone into this very, very, very long project and coming to this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. It looks like Councilmember Hall is up next.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. So for question one, I am quite happy with the MOU. I don't have any suggested changes to the proposal as we're seeing it, although I'm not sure I follow the Deputy Council President's concerns. So perhaps we could follow up and elaborate on that further, because I want to make sure I'm not missing anything here. So perhaps the Deputy City Administrator or the Deputy Council President could, could speak to that. I appreciate what the Deputy City Administrator, gosh, that's a mouthful, Andrea said that this isn't binding and that it helps inform predictability and mutual understanding. And as a development agreement, it forms and begins to be developed, we'll finalize those provisions and have an opportunity to have additional touches with the community, which is really important. And then for question two, yeah, I'm comfortable considering the memorandum of understanding and the purchase and sale agreements together. And also just a big, big, big thank you to Andrea and everyone who touched all this incredible work. I know you've put on a lot of time on this project, and I, I really appreciate your work ethic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. So now I'm threatening to go alphabetical, which means Goodman followed by Hunt.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I don't have any concerns or changes, and I'm fine considering the MOU with the PSAs. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I, too, have no concerns or changes, and I am comfortable considering them together. I did want to request, I was just reading a couple of times the loading dock information. And I guess, I think just for future projects or for my understanding of the Cids requirement and why this is an issue, it would be good to better understand that issue sort of in the broader context of why it was an issue and how it's being considered in the staff decision. I agree with Councilmember De Michele, it would be helpful to have maybe a visual as well. Otherwise, I have no, no concerns.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Because the council is not voting this evening, I would respectfully suggest that the two issues that were brought up by several council members do require some information and not that we have to get through it tonight. But additional information on the loading dock and additional clarification in answer to Deputy Council President Ray's question about risk and who is observing the risk. And so I believe that is something that we can provide you as a follow-up, because you are not voting this evening, if that's okay.
That would be fine with me. That was my intent, actually.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we are at the end of the presentation, the Q and A, and I just want to check back with the development team. Andrea and Hal and Dan, do you have everything that you need from us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I believe that we do.
Fantastic. The next item on the agenda this evening is good of the order. And so I will take a look over the chat box to see if any council members have anything to add. And while I'm waiting for that, I will go through a couple of upcoming council meetings. So there is a special city council meeting on Tuesday, March 23rd, that will include equity training. There is a special council study session Monday, March 29th, with potential agenda items that include the council rules of procedure. The city council regular meeting on April 5th has the following potential agenda items lined up: the consolidated appeal of the hearing examiner's denial of the preliminary plat of the High Street Collection at Issaquah Highlands; a public hearing on the purchase and sale agreements in support of a transit-oriented development project; and the electrical-vehicle charging ordinance. And I'm not seeing anything in the chat for additional good of the order items, so I'm going to assume that we are finished with our council business this evening, besides the executive session that is happening. And so I will now hand over the presiding officer role to the council president to begin the executive session.
Thank you, Mayor Polly.